I'm going to call the City of Milton Common Council meeting to order Tuesday, June 20, 2017 at 7:12 PM and can we have confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
The agenda was posted at Dave's Ace Hardware, Piggly Wiggly, and Milton City Hall.
Item number three, public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. And who do we have?
We need to approve the agenda.
Oh, how did I miss that? We'll go back and approve the agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 All those opposed? We have an agenda. Okay, back to item number three. We have a couple of people that have comments that they would like to make. So you can either make them at the beginning here or wait till your agenda item comes up.
Good evening. My name is Herb Stensky. I live at 321 Rogers Street here in Milton. And the reason I'm here this evening is to talk about an item that had transpired back on the council meeting of April 18th. At that meeting, and I think your minutes will verify this, that I appeared on comments from the public that can be affected by council action and requested that two items be placed on the Public Safety Committee meeting. One was the stop sign situation on Rogers Street. The second one was the speed limit on Parkview. The following month, which would have been, of course, in May, the Public Safety Committee did not meet and the purpose of the reason that they did not meet were lack of agenda We just had the Public Safety Committee meeting this evening prior to the council meeting and on the agenda, there was only one of my requests and that was a stop sign situation on Rogers Street. The item on the speed limit on Parkview was not on the agenda. As a side note, there were only two items on the agenda, but yet, of course, a meeting was held. So I'm a little confused of why the May meeting was not held because there was a lack of agenda items. Well, there were two of them that I asked for back a month prior in April. There are two meetings on tonight's agenda. So obviously, two things to request, meet that criteria, but a meeting was not held. And then in tonight's meeting, one of the items I asked for to be placed on the agenda two months ago did not appear on tonight's meeting agenda. So to sum up, I would ask again that at the next Public Safety Committee meeting, that the agenda item, the speed limit on Parkview Drive, be placed on that agenda. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking up and letting us know.
And just to clarify, the Parkview Drive speed limit issue was my oversight. I just spaced it and didn't put it on there.
Is there any other public comment? Item number four, approval of the consent agenda. And Lynda, did you want to say something?
Yes, I would like to pull item C down to five or whatever number that you would like. Like to take that off of the consent agenda. And then I would make a motion to approve the consent agenda without that.
Okay, go ahead. There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda while moving down C. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries and you want to go ahead and deal with C right now then? Older person, Clark, requested that that be brought down because she would prefer to be able to abstain from that. And so we just need a motion to approve that or deny it, I guess.
I'll move that we approve the conditional use permit and site plan for Milton auto sales contingent upon the installation of screening around the existing dumpsters.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number five, merril proclamation regarding climate change action. I just have to bring this up on the computer so I have it in front of me to read. As many of you probably have heard lately in the news, there has been some concern over climate change and sustainability and what we can do in our own community to make sure that we are taking care of our environment and to make sure that we are prepared for any type of climate change weather and also what our commitment is to being a sustainable city and reducing our carbon footprint. So I had asked staff to look into this research. As you know, many cities have been agreeing to the Paris Climate Accord individually and there's actually two, over 200 mayors that have signed up and have done individual actions to publicly proclaim their commitment to the environment. So I have a proclamation that I am going to read today. And just so you know that we have already been starting some research on this to see how our city can be more sustainable and is there an opportunity for us to look into solar panels on our city buildings? And we are taking steps gradually and incrementally to be more mindful of our impact on our local environment. So whereas the effects of climate change are causing the United States and the world to see the negative impact of inaction by local, state, and federal entities, and whereas the effects of climate change include extreme storms and flooding that harm vulnerable populations, wildfires, and drought that disrupt the agricultural supply chains and jobs, increased air pollution that harm the young and the old, and sea level rise that causes coastal erosion, to name a few, are a clear and present danger to American interests at home and abroad. And whereas the health and safety of all Americans with the current potential of being harmed by climate change effects is recognized to be of vital importance to the City of Milton and our great state of Wisconsin, and whereas the City of Milton will attempt to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, set up plans for climate action, and regularly report on the progress of ideas to our constituents, and whereas these future plans are an investment in the growth of our local economy and energy efficiency, and whereas the City of Milton's actions will inspire solidarity, hope, and opportunity for current and future generations, now therefore I, Anissa M. Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, County of Rock, State of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the city's intention to work on a climate change action plan for the City of Milton and do urge all citizens to join with me and the council to commit towards the success of these future changes. And I will be signing this today. So thank you, everyone, for hearing me out. Next, item number six, public hearing regarding ordinance number 431 and 432 regarding the issuance and sale of alcohol in the City of Milton. I will now open the public hearing part of this and if you would like to speak on behalf of this issue, please come up to the microphone. Would anybody like to speak on this issue? This is the time to do it because if I say it a third time, I'm closing the hearing.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have much to add from what I spoke about at the last meeting, but I know there's some new faces in the crowd and this is, as I believe, the same ordinance that was presented at the last meeting. And I strongly encourage you to consider this ordinance as it would greatly help my business in that I would like to apply for a Class B beer license to improve my business.
Why don't you state your name and the name of your business for people that don't know you?
Yes. Thank you, thank you. I am Amanda Steffel from Timber Hill Winery on Stores Lake Road.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak? Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay. You guys are going to make me say that all night long, are you?
I'm going to work at it.
Thank you for coming up.
Yeah. Jason Cowley, Piggly Wiggly. I guess my question would be is if you guys could review the difference in the Class A and Class B licenses and then also maybe tell us what you're exactly looking to do with Class A and Class B and everything like that because I wasn't at the last meeting, but I'd like some clarification on that if possible. And then hopefully, if I have a question, then I can come back up.
Of course. Yeah.
So I'll try to give an overview of where we're at. I'll try not to go too far back in the Wayback Machine, but as, oh, sure, as folks may or may not be aware, there is ongoing litigation between the City of Milton and Casey's General Store. And although this proposed ordinance isn't as a direct result of that, it is an outcome of that ongoing litigation in which we have agreed to review our ordinances as they pertain to specifically in the case of the Casey's lawsuit, Class A licenses. And as Mr. Cowley pointed out, for the sake of the audience, the City of Milton has the ability to issue, in essence, three types of licenses, Class A, Class B, Class C, but we're really only talking about Class A in the sense that Class A is the establishments that sell prepackaged alcohol to be consumed off-premise. So the Beverage Mart, Cowley's, Piggly Wiggly, Travel Mart, and Quick Trip in Milton are the four Class A license holders. Class B license holders are those that sell alcohol to be consumed on-premise, so a bar, restaurant, tavern, things of that nature. As part of this review process, as an outcome of the Casey's litigation, again, it was requested that we review our alcohol licenses, our alcohol license policy, and ordinances to see if there's areas of revision that we could potentially look at to at least provide a greater degree of clarity from their perspective as to what is and isn't allowable. As things currently stand in the City of Milton, there is a quota of licenses which is capped at four. That is a quota that is established by ordinance by the City of Milton. It is not required by state statutes, so it's often referred to as a self-imposed quota and that affects Class A licenses. What this ordinance would do is it would repeal that quota and provide standards for issuance of licenses that the council should consider when reviewing future licenses. As it stands right now, once we meet the quota of four, it is, that's it, there's no more licenses. Casey's is arguing that there are specific cases of our ordinance that are potentially unconstitutional. We don't agree, but nonetheless, we are in the throes of that litigation and as part of goodwill gesture and an agreement with Casey's attorneys, we are reviewing our alcohol licenses. So at the last meeting, which was June 6th, we introduced a new ordinance, which is the ordinance that you see here this evening, and we had a first reading. And as part of that discussion, the council felt it would be appropriate to hold a public hearing in which the council could come speak either about the ordinance as proposed or offer any other suggestions or amendments to the ordinance that they may see as appropriate in regards to the ordinance. So that's the purpose of the public hearing. Also on the agenda tonight is the ordinance that the council could choose to adopt either tonight or simply have a second reading and wait for adoption at a future meeting. But that is kind of what catches us up to speed in that regard. In regard to Ms. Temple's comments, she is a Class B license holder that is currently not eligible for a Class B beer license because in the Class B beer license world of Milton, we also have a self-imposed quota. And this ordinance would remove that self-imposed quota and allow the council, to full discretion, to review each Class A and Class B beer license on an individual basis with the discretion as outlined in the ordinance. So the council wouldn't lose any discretion. In some ways, you could argue that they gained discretion by removing the quota, but nonetheless, there wouldn't be a quota that would cap the number of licenses issued. The council certainly could adopt this ordinance today and deny every license ever requested moving forward, whether at some point we're even down to three or two or one, they could deny all licenses as drafted. Discretion would remain solely with the city council to issue licenses on a case-by-case basis with these standards of issuance to be used as guidelines for that decision-making process. So, did I miss anything, Mark?
No, I think you covered the main points.
Okay, good.
Again, Jason Cowley from Piggly Wiggly. So Class A liquor would be changed also, not just Class A beer. So I believe Quick Trip only sells beer and wine, correct? And that's their license, it's not liquor?
Can you confirm that this ordinance revision would, in fact, affect Class A beer and Class A intoxicating liquor?
Yes, it would.
Okay.
Okay, to make a statement then, I guess, you know, to put in a convenience store and put hard liquor in a convenience store, I personally think that's a mistake. I think over the years, we've proven, the Beverage Mart and us, that having two places that sell liquor is, it's been plenty of places. And then also that it's, I think, Anissa, you said a long time ago, that the more opportunities we give these kids to get, especially hard liquor, it's putting more people at risk. So I would say if it was only Class B or Class A beer and wine, you know, I guess I wouldn't be so opposed to it, but including liquor, I guess my opinion would be that it's a mistake. So, thank you.
And just a point of clarification to Mr. Cowley's comments, Casey's General Store, as their application currently stands, is only requesting beer. But that doesn't necessarily mean that the next group couldn't request that. But I just wanted to make sure everybody understood that. Casey's application, Marcell for the council's perspective, Casey's application is only for a Class A beer license, but your point is still valid if it were to be for other...
I just want to ask one question too. So just, it means that they could request it. It doesn't mean because you request it that it, like, it's automatic. It's, there would still be the criteria and the council would have more authority to actually deny requests.
Especially with their proximity to the high school and stuff like that.
We didn't feel that they offered the suitable facility to accommodate it. We wouldn't have to approve it.
Okay.
Or we could minimize it and say, limit it to beer and wine or whatever.
So a year from now, if they, say you did grant them a license and a year from now they wanted to include liquor, now you have the right to refuse that?
Well, and you noticed that proximity is one of the criteria.
Yeah.
Proximity to other establishments, to schools, whatever the council feels appropriate to look at.
Okay. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to come up and speak on this or has any other clarification questions? Is there any other public comment? All right, third time, you know, we got to close it after a second. Is there any other public comments? Okay, the public hearing is now closed and thank you for everybody that spoke up. Item numbers, item number seven, discussion, direction, and possible action on ordinance 431, amending section 14-400 regarding the issuance of alcohol licenses and permits. This is not a public hearing.
I'm reading this and just wondering if I can offer an amendment, maybe a backslash. I'm looking at item 17 and it probably covers that with other relevant factors, but I'm looking for, I'm looking for a word in here that I don't see in any of the 17 marks. Number seven seems appropriate. If we can add a backslash after neighborhood and include schools, the compatibility of
Do schools fall under other properties in the immediate area?
Because it could be parks and other things.
Right, I would be careful not to limit ourselves to just schools. It could be a variety of issues.
Daycares.
Daycare.
Parks.
Parks.
Churches.
It could be a church that offers daycare or preschool, like some of ours offer 4K now. I think we have to be careful to, you know, use a more general term to ensure that, yeah, that we don't limit ourselves.
I understand that and if we don't get a second, that's fine, but one of the big proponents of the City of Milton to move here is our schools and it's important to me if I don't get the second or it doesn't pass, I'll at least have tried.
Because I didn't hear it as a motion.
I asked, I offered an amendment to this. If that's how, do I have to word it better?
Oh, Mark, what are you?
No, that's, that's fine. I understand that there's a, there's a motion to, I guess, amend, is it subpart seven to have it recompatibility of proposed use with neighborhood slash, or neighborhood and, and schools? Is that what you're saying? Neighborhood and schools? Okay.
Okay, so there's a motion. Is there a second? There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comment or discussion?
Actually, I do have a question then when you go on to item eight.
Okay, okay, but we have to deal with this motion and this second on item number seven.
Okay.
I respect Alderman's amendment, proposed amendment, but I also think, as was stated earlier, that we need to keep it a little broader. I'm concerned that we'll leave other groups out. I think neighborhood or maybe a similar word, neighborhood facilities, neighborhood locations, neighborhood concerns maybe, but I think it could be addressed that way perhaps. So I just offer that comment, so.
I'm just wondering if you actually make the distinction of school on seven if we're contradicting ourselves with what eight says.
Okay. Brian, do you have any comment or Dave or Teresa?
I wonder if number eight kind of covers things like looking into schools or other things that might have a play on or a factor upon the, what do we call it, like, to not, I'm wondering if eight kind of, to some extent, covers that. And I think that putting schools there might actually make it more of a, if schools scattered throughout the entire city, so it counts. It could potentially limit.
Thank you, Ryan. Does anybody else have any comment? Hang on, Dave, just a second, we can't hear you.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Dave.
I said, thinking about it here for a minute, listening to some of the comments, I think you're right. They, we need to stay with the more general area. I'm going to whip on my mic.
The second has been withdrawn and we are going to move on from that. Is there anything else with regards to this discussion?
I just want to be sure that, I think it's here, but I'm just, that there, I don't want to say there has to be a public hearing, but that public hearings would also be a potential to gather input. Is that a fair way of presenting it? I don't know if it has to be listed as one of the 17 here, but I'm just, are we, are we as a council and as a government saying public hearings are part of our process if we have concerns or we feel there's concerns about a license application? That's all.
Yep, Dave?
Yeah, we have a license application up for approval on the agenda that we should be, anybody should be able to speak on that.
Correct.
Yeah, and I don't think we need to have a formal public hearing notice.
Okay.
Do we?
No, we don't. And it's kind of similar to what we did tonight, that if we feel like it's something that we want a very specific notice for, that we can vote on to have a public hearing, but you're correct that, and, you know, typically, and I can't promise you, if another mayor or another council is elected, I mean, you don't have to allow public discussion on any topic ever. That is up to the chair, but how it's been for the most part with our council, we've, over the years, we've had public discussions, but there have been mayors previously in the past that have limited public discussions. That's not my approach, but, you know, so far, we've been able to accommodate public input, but that's, you know, that's not a guarantee that this council can make in the future, I guess, just to be clear. I hope we never get to that either. Is there any other questions or comments? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance, that we approve the second and waive the third reading of ordinance amending section 1440 of the Code of Ordinances of the City
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or discussions or questions? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number eight, discussion, direction, and possible action on ordinance number 432 creating section 14392D regarding the sale and serving of alcohol in the city.
I really feel that, or do I have to make a motion first, Madam Mayor?
You don't have to. You can, you can make the motion, get a second, and then have debate.
I'll, I'll move for approval of ordinance 143921D.
And just for clarification, is it the similar motion to the last one, which is to approve the second reading, waive the third, and adopt? Is that your motion?
Thank you. Yes, correct.
And a second. And a second. And is there further comment, questions, or debate?
I just was going to...
Yes, the motion is to approve ordinance number 432, approve the second reading of ordinance number 432, waive the third reading, and adopt.
Did you get that, Ryan?
I did, yeah.
I was just going to say that I, I really think that this is really helpful. I was just going to say that I, I really think that this is really helpful. I think it's helpful for our existing license holders, and it certainly is going to be helpful for new license holders, because I think some of these things are occurring in our, in our city and some aren't, and this may be a, a good incentive for establishments to follow. So that's my comment.
Anybody else? Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries.
He didn't say.
Dave, Dave, did you vote? Yep. Linda needs to sit next to that end, I guess.
So just, I guess, just a point of clarification, that now that ordinance has been approved, it is, it is our intention then to re-review, for lack of a better term, the Casey's application with the new ordinance in place.
Correct. Well, we'll, we'll consult with the attorney that's representing the city in reference to the lawsuit to see exactly where they're at and what their requirements are in that regard. The new ordinance is in place, but there's certain provisions in the stipulation which may affect
Correct.
which ordinance is used to review.
Correct.
It's a bit complicated, so that's my only pause on that. But the city so far has done what it needs to do
Yeah.
for that stipulation.
Okay, item number nine, discussion and possible action regarding ordinance two thousand seventeen, four thirty-three, rezoning a portion of property on East Milton Harmony Townline Road to R two residential district. And this is something that was presented at Plan Commission tonight and recommended approval at the council.
Yeah, the only thing I will add for the folks who weren't at the Plan Commission, Mr. Pierce, who's out in the audience today, is requesting the rezoning of a portion of his property. Most folks in the community are aware of the Pierce Farm, as it's commonly referred to, is a one hundred and fifty acre plus parcel that is located west of Parkview Drive and north of Townline Road, across from Cross Road, or Crossridge Park and the YMCA. He's requesting a, a portion of that property, a hundred acres plus or minus of that property be rezoned from A two to R two in anticipation of future residential development that may occur on that site. As the mayor noted, the site underwent before the Plan Commission, and held a, a public hearing was held, and the Plan Commission unanimously approved the rezoning and recommended that the council do the same. Mr. Pierce is here, if you have questions specifically for him, or myself, or Howie. But again, this is only the rezoning, and it's only a portion of that property at this time.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there further comment or?
Just a clarification on the motion. Again, is it the motion similar to the preceding motions, which would be to approve the first reading, waive the second and third and adopt?
It is, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, for the second.
Okay.
I have a question. If, I, I'm a little, a little uncertain. I just want a clarification, I guess. Plus or minus, to be determined by site plan?
No, it's, it's established, the, the area to be rezoned is, is going to be, is legally established by the legal description that is provided in there.
Okay.
The reason I say plus or minus is because I don't necessarily have a scientific way of figuring out exactly how it is to match that legal description. What they indicate through the legal description is that's a hundred and nine point five acres.
That's what I kind of saw.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's just my easy way out.
I didn't want to hand anything in, or
Yeah, no, no, no.
stress later.
Yeah. No, but it, it, the area is legally defined by the legal description, and they have that as one hundred and nine point five acres more or less.
Any further questions or comment? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. And item number ten, discussion and possible action regarding resolution two thousand seventeen fifteen, transferring a portion of city-owned land located adjoining eight forty-four South Janesville Street.
Back in February of this year, the Plan Commission and City Council approved a vacation of a portion of right-of-way along South Janesville Street in front of the storage units that are owned by Mr. Turnius, who's out in the audience this evening. The item on the agenda tonight is the resolution that would effectively, effectively transfer that land to Mr. Turnius. So once the vacation took place, we need to pass the resolution in order to have that deed prepared and transferred. So this is the final step of that process this evening.
I make a motion that we approve resolution twenty seventeen dash fifteen, transferring a portion of the city-owned land locating adjoining eight forty-four South Janesville Street.
Dave seconded it. There's a motion, okay, and did you say waive the second?
Nope, you don't need to, on a resolution.
Okay. We'll get it right. There's a motion and a second. Any further questions, discussions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number eleven, discussion and possible action regarding a claim against the City of Milton from Winner, Wixson, and Prentons for three seventy-two Woodcrest Lane.
Okay. The item that's before you tonight is a claim that has been filed against the City of Milton through a, a subrogation through an insurance company representing the homeowners at three seventy-two Woodcrest Lane. Earlier this year, during one of the more violent storms that we had, a tree that was planted on the public, planted on public property fell and, and struck the, the homeowner's shed. In, in the insurance world, or at least provided by our insurance provider, they recommended denial of the claim due to it being an act of God, in which the city had no prior knowledge of the tree's ability to fall on the shed, and we were not negligent in, in care and maintenance of, of our urban forest. So we are recommending that we deny the claim submitted by Winner, Wixson, and Prentons, as, as noted by our insurance provider, Sivmick. And we need to make an official, official denial, so that's why this is before you tonight, if you so choose to deny the claim.
It's pretty hard to expect an insurance company, even, or even the city, to come up with something as a result of an act of God. And if, we're, if we're talking about that one main storm that we had a few weeks ago, there was a lot of damage to that storm, from that storm, and, you know, one of the things that, one of the things that I, always comes to my mind is that if that was a tornado, and it moved somebody's tree two yards over, then does that mean that that person has to pay for that tree to be replaced and, and recover that damage? And it's not, those things just don't happen in the insurance world. I want to make a motion that we deny this claim. It's unfortunate, I guess. I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or questions or discussion? All those in favor?
I'm sorry, just, just one thing. Can we add to the motion the reasons for the denial, so then I can include that with the denial letter? I think that would be helpful.
We can add the response that we received from our own insurance company.
That's fine. Okay. Okay. All those in favor? All those opposed? That was an aye in favor, right, Ryan? I'm sorry, I'm moving quick.
Correct, in favor.
Okay. All those opposed? The motion carries. Item number twelve, discussion and possible action approving new and renewal operator licenses for two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen.
It is that time of year again in which we renew operator licenses, and as you can see, there is a number of renewals and a, and a couple of new ones on the list. We do this on an annual basis. License period runs from July first through June thirtieth of the following year. Leann, in the clerk's office, has reviewed all of the renewals and the new licenses and is recommending approval of all those listed.
I move that we approve the new and renewal two thousand seventeen, eighteen operator licenses. Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries. Discussion and possible action approving tobacco cigarette licenses for two thousand seventeen to two thousand eighteen.
Same process. Tobacco licenses and cigarette licenses for city, for the sale within the city, run from July first to June thirtieth of the, of the prior year, so it's that time of year again. Leann has processed all of these requests. There are no new ones, just renewals from the previous license holders, and we are recommending approval as well.
Motion to approve the renewal two thousand seventeen, eighteen tobacco cigarette licenses.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments, questions, or discussions? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number fourteen, discussion and possible action on resolution two thousand seventeen sixteen, amending the City of Milton's annual budget.
For those folks who were at the meeting last week, the joint city council, town board, fire commission meeting, we took action to recommend a, a budget amendment that would allow for the extension of the contract for RW management, as well as administrative services, administrative costs associated with the joint agreement between the Milton Fire Department and the City of Janesville. We would need, we needed to prepare a budget resolution in order to officially amend the budget, and this, this resolution does so. In addition to that, we also included a portion of the library, changes to the library wages, and this is in response to some of the changes that have taken place in the library with, with the new facility and, and changes to their budget. We wanted to more accurately reflect that now that we're halfway through the year and we know what we're, what we're working with over there at the brand spanking new library with all sorts of fun amenities and two floors and things like that. So, so that is the purpose of this budget, budget resolution. So it's twofold. It's to address the fire commission issues that were discussed last week, as well as address the, the library issues as well.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve resolution number two zero one seven dash sixteen, amending the two thousand seventeen annual budget.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further comments or questions or discussions? For those, most, I think everybody was there, we had a very long discussion and thorough and thoughtful discussion with the town of Milton last week. We spent really a lot of time and effort, and I'm pleased with how, how much people have been researching and really thinking about this, both in the City of Milton and the town of Milton. And, as you know, the library has, you know, we've been continually supportive of the changes, the amenities, and really making that a destination. So I think it is appropriate that we approve this resolution. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number fifteen, discussion and possible action regarding May two thousand seventeen financial pack.
Nothing, nothing too exciting here, which is probably a good thing. This latest budget amendment is not reflected. Will be reflected in next month. I guess, are there any questions, since everyone's, hopefully had a chance to look at it?
Anybody have anything? Is there any action that you would like us to take on it, or?
Just approve it.
Just approve it?
I will make that motion to approve the financial package.
There's a motion and a second. Are there any questions? Any further comments? All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Item number sixteen, general items, committee reports. I'll let you guys decide who wants to go first on committee reports. Parks and Rec met, public safety met.
Yeah, Parks and Rec, we met, discussed several items. Highlights of that are some of the work that our intern has been doing, and we're, I think Inga could help me, but there was a, a movement towards a monarch USA establishment, or being part of that as a city.
Yes, we're looking into becoming a monarch city USA. We're looking into all the criteria involved with that.
Right. We did some further discussion on the preliminary design for the Storybook Gardens, and that's cool. That's coming along. We're getting to a point where things are starting to fall into place a little bit for the design. And what else was there?
We're also working on the application to become an Ice Age Trail
Yes.
community, and if anyone's interested in serving on the application committee for that, let myself or Larry know, and we'll get you signed up.
Yep, and once we complete that application, then we'll have a framework to work from as far as what Ice Age Trail within the city limits will look like, so.
Public safety?
We spoke, we listened to Ms. Kramer and Mr. Stensky in regards to parking, Parkview Drive, and then Rogers Street as far as stop signs is concerned. We're going to take a further, deeper look and look at it again on our next agenda, see if we have a little bit of redundancy on Rogers Street in regards to stop signs, and whether or not there is a safety issue or a reason to limit parking in the St. Mary's Parkview area and Blanche Drive, too. But other than that, I think the, the juicy stuff will come with the staff reports.
You're hyping us up. Okay, well, with that, staff reports, chief, you're up.
I don't know how juicy it's going to be, but I'll give it a shot. Yeah, I really only have one item.
You can try it out.
Yeah, I'll try. We have, police commission met last Wednesday in reference to our latest hiring process. We interviewed four finalist candidates and certified a list of one. Overall, we were fairly disappointed as a group at the number of applications we received, and we're weighing why that might be for this go-around. It's, it's something that is a national trend, and I'm wondering if we're starting to finally feel it here, and we'll see how that goes. So we're backrounding the single candidate now and hope to move him through that process and maybe report back within a month or so that we've made a new hire.
And it was for a full-time position?
Full-time position. This is to fill Jim Martin's position.
Thank you. Um, Inga? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sometimes I just can't see over the counter. Lisa?
We do have an opening at the library. We are, we're accepting applications through July fourteenth for a technology coordinator. This is someone who gives one-on-one training on devices to the public, as well as, in the future, our website's going to go to WordPress. So it would be someone who's familiar with website design, who can do updates for us, um, as well as coordinate some programs in our Spark, um, hands-on lab. So, um, we're excited for Andrew to, he's moving to a library in, uh, Three Lakes, Wisconsin. I don't know where that is, but he's going there. And so I'm excited. It's a full-time position for him. And look forward to, um, to, you know, going through the hiring process and finding someone who will be a part of our team, team at the library, so.
Thank you. Inga?
I don't have any updates, other than I'm working with Lisa on her recruitment and I'm also working with Howie on his recruitment for a general labor position. And those applications are due on July 10th.
Okay. Al?
We'll have the second meeting of the CDA 2.0 tomorrow afternoon at 3 o'clock. Looking forward to that discussion. We're gonna be, uh, delving a little bit further into, uh, some of the concepts that we talked about two weeks ago. Um, and, and hopefully starting to formulate, uh, a list of goals, priorities, objectives, things of that nature. Uh, the other thing that I will mention is, uh, this is just a general comment. This morning, Inga came into my office and she showed me a picture of, uh, the new sign that's out in front of Badger State Maintenance. And she said, you know, this would be something that we should put on our Instagram account. Oh, by the way, we have an Instagram account now. And it, it got me thinking that she's exactly right. It's something that we should, you know, one of the things that government does very, very poorly is celebrate success and, and, uh, you know, kind of, uh, keep folks aware of the good things that are happening. So I thought about that a little bit more in, in this afternoon. I drove over there to, to look at the site. And on my way over there, I thought, well, that's right, there's Chuck Jackson's doing his project too. So I drove over there and took pictures of that. And if you haven't been by that, that is, holy cow, does that change? And then I drove by Charter NEX and they're finishing up their project. Then I went around the loop and came by and saw the Badger State, or Badger Properties, uh, sign that's out front, uh, out, out in Crossroads Business Park, advertising their business. And Diamond Assets is gonna be beginning construction this fall as well. We're gonna be working on Pumpman Parkway. And we finished the Milton House Parking Lot Parking Lot. So I went and took pictures of that. We were hopefully gonna finish the Merchant Row Parking Lot tomorrow. Uh, but the rain kind of squashed that. And I guess my point is, you know, we have a pretty small community. And it, it, you know, it doesn't take a lot to drive around. But if you take the time to drive around, you'll see, it's unbelievable how much activity is going on. And how much new construction? And, I mean, we haven't even started to talk about the residential development that, you know, is like, like coming forward. Mike Lucas just put forth, uh, just started to build his buildings on Sunset Drive today. And, and I, I think about a comment that was said to me about, probably about 12 months ago. Said, "Al, I don't see cranes out there in that industrial park." And today, there was two. And, and there was gonna be, and there, and there was a third one earlier this week. And, and I'm not saying that to say, look, look at all the work that, you know, I've done. I'm saying, it's impressive in a little community like this, all the things that are going on. And, and, you know, the Gazette had a great article that, that stuff gets lost so, so, so quickly. Um, when, when the attention gets grabbed by, um, kind of one-off things and, and little things that, that rub people the wrong way. And I'm certainly a victim of that too. Anybody who sat through the public safety meeting knows. Um, it, it's easy to get sidetracked with those things because you can put your arms around them. But when you lose sight of kind of the, the big, how, how, how the ship is really moving. It takes a long time to turn a ship. And, you know, just driving around for 15 minutes today, took pictures of six different projects that are going on right now. Some of those are public projects, but not all of them. It's, um, it's exciting. And I'm very, very, very proud to be in this position and very fortunate to be in this position, um, at this time, uh, with, with everybody up here as elected officials, but more so with the folks that are on staff. It's just, uh, it's just a cool, cool thing to go drive around and see that today. But please don't get the idea that I'm just driving around.
Right. No, you drive around and you're taking pictures, posting to Instagram.
I was trying to transfer over to computers so we could do something maybe.
Could you hire that tech person quicker? And send him to City Hall? So, good on ya, staff and council. Um, Dan?
I don't have anything exciting, which is probably good. Cause if I got something exciting, but I'd cost money.
Howie?
Uh, I think Al got most of mine, but, um, it's kind of all about the same stuff. But, um, the one is Fourth of July Parade. The road's gonna close at 12 this year, so.
Does it usually close?
12:30, so.
So it'll actually close at 12:30, cause it usually takes forever.
It'll actually close at 12 this year.
It's gonna close at, okay, so we're sticking to it, right?
Yeah, it's close at 12, yeah.
So Scott at 12:05, if you see a minivan and the license plate says Max 777. Driving down Madison Avenue, it's working, we're barriers.
We'll take care of it.
Not a new plate though.
Oh, but not a new plate.
New house, new car?
I need to walk by your house for a while, I guess.
Howie, don't we have a, uh, aren't we also gonna be closing the dog park early?
The dog park for the run this year is just, we're gonna close the parking lot for about two and a half hours when the run's going on. Just so that runners and the traffic don't interfere with each other down there, so. It's got posted already down there, so. Yep. And then, um, and then besides on Badger State, besides the regular building, they're taking out six permits for six of the, um, spec buildings too. So, so they started those permits too today. Otherwise, people are liking the splash park, so. They like the new bathrooms that went in. We've heard good comments about the improvements, so.
Howie, do you want to mention the alternate detour route for the Fourth of July Parade as well?
Oh, and this year also, we're gonna have, it's, it's actually, there's the regular detour, um, that goes, you know, down Sunset and around John Paul for local traffic. But also this year, we're gonna use County N as a detour for the truck traffic and for the larger RVs that, you know, if they don't want to come to the city, you know, and go around all through the local, they can just use County N and go to Highway 26 that way.
Is there a, a list of all the activities? Is it gonna be in the Courier? Is it on our website? Or where, if someone's looking to find out what's going on the Fourth of July in Milton, where do they find everything?
It's www.milton, the number four, T H, dot com. And that's the Milton FFA alumni. I believe that they put that site together. All the event listings on there.
Perfect. Okay, are you guys all ready? This is a group participation, team-building effort as usual. Maxine, you better run now. Ryan, you're gonna be assigned extra committees for this. All right, so, the theme is superheroes. Now, that doesn't mean it has to be a Marvel comic necessarily. It could be just somebody in your life that's a superhero. So just share with us. And we can have volunteers. And it's probably because somebody saw Wonder Woman this weekend. Who is your superhero? And I was gonna email you this ahead of time, but I fell asleep.
I'll go first. My mother. And I'll just tell you why. When I was a boy, at age five, my muscular problems began. And it actually began a little sooner than that and I was gonna go into first grade. And at that time, when they didn't know what to do with people who had challenges, uh, they would recommend, oh, you should be in a special education class. And my mother stood up and said, and I was so proud of her, "My son has a physical problem. There's nothing wrong with his ability to learn." And so she spent the summer teaching me to read. So when I entered first grade, I was reading at a third grade level. So my mom's my hero.
Thank you. Dave?
I guess I would have to say my father. When I was just a youngster in the 40s, he was working two eight-hour jobs, six days a week. And, uh, early 50s, quit one job so that he could personally build our new, our new home in Harvard, Illinois. And, uh, still found time, day be fishing, hunting. He's just a super guy.
Thank you, Dave. That's very cool. Dan?
I'd say I had a fifth grade teacher that, um, opened my world to travel and other things that I hadn't been opened up to at that point in time.
You guys aren't supposed to make me cry. Mark? Only on you not to be sent to my home.
Well, having lived long enough, having experienced a lot of people and knowing all their foibles, I'm reluctant to get into the label of hero. But I guess the closest that anyone would come would be my parents. And, um, I think they did, well, for the most part, they did a good job with my family. Myself excluded. The rest, the rest of the kids turned out quite well, so. So I guess I'd go with them.
Thanks. Howie? I don't, Ace Frehley or something? I don't know.
You can say me, Howie.
I mean, I'm not going serious. Awesome. Anybody in the audience want to share? This is to encourage participation, not deter. We understand if you'd like to pass. Chief?
Well, Facebook memory showed me that I actually used that word three years ago. Cause this is right about the anniversary of the tornado that went through UW-Plattville. And, um, I used it in reference to all of the college student camp counselors who protected a whole lot of people that night. And that certainly wasn't in their job description, so. That's my example.
Very cool. Lisa?
I would say my older brother, he always encouraged me, um, in school. I was good at, at math and science, so I went into engineering. And, um, it was kind of lonely back then to be in engineering as a woman. But anyway, he, he always just encouraged me and made sure I had somewhere to go for weekends or whatever. So he's always been there for me, my older brother, so.
Linda?
This is a really tough question. I'm gonna say my grandmother. She had 10 kids. She had seven boys and three girls. And they were poor as could be and ended up living a wonderful life. All of her kids did very well. She had kids that were in the health field. She had kids that were in the military. She had kids that were in the police department, fire department. And she was just, she's very messed. She, she was always there, whether you wanted a cookie or if you just wanted a, a hug. She was always there and, you know, I, and I mean, 10 kids. 10 kids living on a farm, slinging chickens. I mean, that's, that's pretty real. Plus, they were all successful kids, so.
I think I could say my parents. Celebrate my dad's retirement after 43 years. All in the same industry, much with the same employer, the, the line he used, uh, to, you know, to do, to whatever it is that you're doing, to, to do it the best that you can. Or my mom saying, you know, to do for your kids better than it was done for you. Those would be easy ones. Or I could, or I could pick JFK, but I'm going with Spider-Man.
Next. Ryan?
Uh, I also think my parents have been superheroes to me. They've done a lot to, uh, instill, I think, good values in me as well. And also the teachers I had, and even teachers that I worked with as well. Did a great job instilling, uh, great values. I can't really pick just one that's been kind of a team effort of people throughout my lifetime working with me to, uh, help me be a better person. But, uh, on the other side of things, I would also go with Batman.
I'm going to go with my almost two-year-old daughter Gwen, because she knows how to live the life. At daycare, she goes swimming in the pool. She eats her food. She naps. It's perfect. She is definitely my hero. She, um, knows exactly what she wants in life and she is not afraid to say it. And she's very good at identifying animals now, so she is my hero.
Um, that's so interesting because I'm, a couple of things. Uh, my kids for sure. They had a really, uh, hard life and they're all successful and they're not in jail. And, um, they're, they are all in very honorable professions of, uh, teaching and a nurse and a marine. And, um, if, you know, I would have known how tough it was gonna be on them, I would have never predicted necessarily that they were gonna come out so good. And I, you know, that's, speaks highly of them. But it also speaks highly of the Milton School District and the city of Milton because you had a huge influence on, um, on my kids being so successful. And I've talked about that all the time. But, um, you know, it has to be Wonder Woman. I mean, she kicks butt in this new movie. And it's, I would recommend everybody go to see it and especially take your daughters. And you will be inspired and you will love it. And it doesn't take away from Linda Clark either. It, it doesn't. It's, you know, it's just a greater, better version of Wonder Woman. So, um, Gwen needs to get her Wonder Woman costume on and she needs to go. Al?
Wolverine.
Teresa?
Uh, I just, I have a colleague that I worked with for a long time and I just admire them. And, uh, yeah, they just inspired me. And I think it made me into a better person than I would have been without them.
Good job, you guys. All right, next meeting, Tuesday, July 11th, 2017 at 7:00 PM. We will all be recovered from all of the Fourth of July partying. And do I have a motion to adjourn? So moved. Motion in a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Ryan said he's opposed to adjourning, so we're gonna meet for another five minutes now. It was unanimous. We're adjourned. Thank you, guys. Good meeting.